Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the March 9, 2023 work session of the Henrico County School Board. The first item on our agenda this afternoon is the approval of the agenda. Board members may have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. And now let's have a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. And the next item on the agenda will be presented by the Chief of Staff. She will present the superintendent's items. Ms. Coy.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everybody. I know Superintendent Cashwell is watching us from afar this afternoon, but it is my pleasure to bring forth the first item at her recommendation today. Thank you. Appreciate it. That the school board approve a resolution to participate in the proposed settlements of opioid-related claims. I will note that the county's Board of Supervisors approved participation in the settlement last month, and although the school board would not directly receive proceeds from the settlement, it may receive incidental benefits from the settlement proceeds that would be paid to the county.
Thank you, Ms. Coy. Board members, does anyone have a question or comment before we vote? Okay, hearing no questions or comments, may I have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the resolution to participate in proposed settlements of opioid-related claims against Teva, Allegion, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and related corporate entities.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Now for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution has been approved.
The next item on the agenda that comes at the superintendent's recommendation is that the school board review the school calendar committee's draft calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. The calendar committee met last month to review and give feedback, so a draft calendar could be developed. And there is a draft here offered for your discussion. Following the discussion, a community survey will be launched using this as the basis for soliciting feedback to bring back further recommendations to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Coy. Board members, I'm certain we have comments and questions on the draft of the calendar put forward to us. We'll start with Ms. Ogborne.
Just a comment, actually, and that is that as I look at it, I am really glad to see that we are continuing our practice of recognizing the special holidays of the members of our community. I think that is so important as we celebrate the diversity of Henrico, and so I'm glad that continues. And I noticed that there are a couple of times where we've incorporated those holidays to give students a four-day weekend break, which I think is really nice if we can achieve that, that those good wellness days and good time for families to be together. I don't have any specific questions, but look forward to the comments that come in from the public. How long will our comment period be? Do we have a timeline?
Yes. The survey will open this weekend, and it will be open through the end of March.
Okay. Thank you. That's all from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. If I could just note for those listening that the approval of the calendar will come forward to the board at our April 20, 2023 meeting. Okay, questions, comments? Ms. Atkins?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Reverend Cooper?
I just concur with Ms. Ogborne. I just could not reiterate or repeat her sentiments any more eloquently, so go ahead.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. And I agree with you, which means I agree with Ms. Ogborne, and valuing the diversity of our students and employees and community in Henrico County. I have a question, though, because I see the half-days still remain, and I know that prior feedback has indicated that half-days aren't as favorable to our stakeholders. Ms. Coy, can you let us know what the calendar committee said about the half-days?
Yes, absolutely. So this was a topic of robust discussion with our calendar committee. We actually went back and looked at some of the data around half-days and found there were kind of two sentiments that rose to the top. One, that our staff really appreciates those half-days at the end of the quarter, which allows them to enter grades and close things out before starting the next quarter. And that's how we've placed them currently in this draft proposal. But what the calendar committee also found is that the absenteeism rates were lessened when the half-day was in the middle of the week, not on a Friday. And so when possible, we placed the half-day in the middle of the week to align with the end of the quarter or the semester so that we could try and alleviate some of those concerns from the members of the committee.
Have we considered, in looking at the calendar and the placement, are all of the proposed... the wellness days are in the calendar?
They are.
And the... there might perhaps be additional wellness days, depending on inclement weather, or no?
So what we've done in this proposal is include two wellness days, as we have every year. We've also included a question in the survey for our families to give us feedback about stacking them to create those long weekends, and whether that's their preference or if they would prefer to space them out differently. We don't at this time have allocated days specific to inclement weather for the 24-25 calendar.
Okay. If I may, just share feedback that I've received for consideration to consider if we should have a bonus wellness day. Could we have it around daylight saving time?
Oh.
Perhaps, because that adjustment is quite an adjustment for, I think, for all of us, perhaps, but I have heard feedback specific to that. I've also heard feedback about the day after the Super Bowl. But let me see, what else?
Only if your team loses. That's it, I mean.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. But that's feedback I've received specifically, actually, to both, and folks were very serious about the day after the Super Bowl.
They are.
But I do know that for everyone, when we spring forward, as long as we maintain that, that that's an adjustment that might be appreciated as we consider possible days. Okay, I guess that's it for the calendar. I look forward to hearing stakeholder feedback.
Madam Chair, if you know.
Certainly, Ms. Ogborne.
I just did... I think we would be remiss if we did not point out that the last day for students is the 30th of May, and that this will be our first calendar where we have the two-week early start fully implemented, right? I mean, no?
No, it'll be our second.
This is be the second?
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay. But I noticed that, and I just think it's interesting, I think it'll be interesting to hear from our families that they like this, you know, going early, get out early that we're doing. And the last day for teachers is June 2, which is... that's really great. I like it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Matter of fact, Ms. Coy, I have one more question. Did the calendar committee consider, since we've rolled back our start of school by two weeks, and I know that the calendar, it's not just our stakeholders, right? It's kind of a regional discussion?
Yes.
If you will, has there been any discussion to date about changing spring break? Because I know the board did receive some feedback about that.
Not particular to this calendar committee, but that's certainly something we can solicit feedback on and bring back for you.
I would appreciate if you would have the committee discuss that and discuss it regionally to see how our counterparts... what our counterparts are hearing as well.
Yep.
Since we're all impacted, wherever we live, work, play, and learn, right?
Correct. And I believe that one of our regional counterparts has a calendar set for the 24-25 school year, and the spring breaks align.
Okay.
But we'll be happy to bring back additional feedback.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
And then the next item is you again, Ms. Coy.
Indeed. So the next item on our agenda is a recommendation from the superintendent that the school board accept the Early Childhood Preschool Provisionally Licensed Teacher Incentive Program Grant Award. This is $24,000 from the Virginia Department of Education.
I think we're going to enthusiastically give a motion for that, for our early learning. Board members may have a motion.
I move that the school board accept the Early Childhood Preschool Provisionally Licensed Teacher Initiative Program Grant Award.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the grant has been accepted.
The next item on the agenda comes from the operations team, and the superintendent recommends that the school board award a construction contract to Woodland Construction Incorporated for security vestibule construction in the amount of $173,800 for Moody Middle School and $174,700 for Short Pump Middle School. The superintendent also recommends that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute the contract in a form approved by the county attorney and to execute change orders within the scope of the project budgets, not to exceed 15% of the original contract amount.
Thank you, Ms. Coy. Board members, do you have any questions or comments before I ask for the motion?
I can... Can I share excitement?
Absolutely, because I'm going to share the same excitement.
And I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Pritchard. I am so excited that we're getting the Short Pump vestibule done. I really am. That's... that is good news. The community will be very happy.
I not only support your vestibule, but I support our vestibule at Moody Middle School. I know my constituents there will be very happy, as it's been on the list for some time. So thank you for bringing forth that excitement.
So therefore, can I make a motion?
You may.
All right. I move that the school board award a construction contract to Woodland Construction, Inc., for security vestibule construction at Moody and Short Pump Middle Schools, and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract in a form approved by the county attorney and to execute change orders within the scope of the project budgets, not to exceed 15% of the original contract amounts.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The ayes have it, and this motion has been accepted.
The last item on the agenda is a recommendation from the superintendent that the school board approve the Dominion Energy Right-of-Way Agreement between Virginia Electric and Power Company and the county school board at Glen Allen High School.
Thank you, Ms. Coy. I actually have a question, but I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments first. And maybe this will... Thank you, Mr. Pritchard, for coming forward. As you know, because I've shared it with you, some concerns from constituents about this easement, about the tennis court lighting at Glen Allen High School. While folks in the community are enthusiastic, we've heard some feedback about ours, that the lights will be on, and notification to residents about this particular topic. If you maybe have a little bit more information you could share, or is it just Dominion Energy will be contacting neighbors of the school, if you will?
Yes, this is a Dominion Energy project, so therefore we've had to rely, and that's why we've had... been delayed for such a long period of time. We've had poles there for almost a year, ready to go, but working out all of this stuff, and I think that we've worked some kind of agreement with Dominion and the residents that live along the edge of the property to where we can divert power from another source, and hopefully all sides will be satisfied with this.
Okay. And Dominion will be working with community members, right? Not us on this?
Yes, not us. No.
Okay.
And then anything that would go out, I mean, you know, the lighting issue and stuff, I think that's usually something that's usually done when people talk with the schools and communicate on what's best. I mean, nor do we want to keep our things open 24 hours a day either.
Okay. And who at the school might be in charge of that? Since it's athletic, would it be the A.D.?
It would be the DSA, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard.
You're welcome.
All right. Board members, may I please have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the Dominion Energy Right-of-Way Agreement at Glen Allen High School.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the Dominion Energy Right-of-Way Agreement at Glen Allen High School has been approved. The next item on the agenda is public forum, and this is written comments only for today's meeting. Citizens had until 4:30 p.m. on Wednesday, March 8 to submit comments to the board's... for the board's review using a link on the HCPS website. Citizens did take advantage of that opportunity, and we sincerely appreciate their input. Comments were compiled and provided to the board prior to the start of today's meeting, and those comments have also been included in board docs. The next item is unfinished business. Board members, do we have any unfinished business? Seeing and hearing none. The next item is new business. Board members, do we have any new business? Okay, we have no new business. The next item is the announcement of our meeting dates. The school board's next meeting after our 4:30 art recognition this afternoon is... the next work session will be on Thursday, March 23, 2023, at 1 p.m., and then there will be a monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m. that evening. Please note that the meeting times may be adjusted as needed, and then the board will take a short recess until 4:30, where we're going to recognize Youth Art Month. Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone back to the March 9, 2023 work session of the Henrico County School Board, and I'm very excited to present the next item on the agenda, which is recognition of Youth Art Month. Ms. Coy, who is standing in for the superintendent, Dr. Cashwell, this afternoon, will you please tee this up?
I'm happy to.
Good afternoon, everybody. It is my honor to introduce Mr. Mike Calathis and welcome him to the podium. He is going to announce the recognitions for our annual school board exhibit and Youth Art Month.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Hughes, colleagues, guests, and student artists, welcome to the annual school board student art show. I am honored to be the art specialist for Henrico County Schools. First thing I'd like to do is thank the parents, teachers, and administrators who have joined us today to celebrate Youth Art Month. If you are a parent or a member of the family of an artist here today, please stand and If you are an art teacher, please stand and be recognized. And if you are an administrator joining us today, please stand and be recognized. Youth Art Month is a nationwide and annual observance that is held each March to emphasize the value of art education for all children and to encourage public support for quality art programs. From special events, activities, contests, and opportunities, Youth Art Month is a celebration of the power that art brings. My hope is that every child here today has a greater appreciation for the arts because of our division's wonderful support of the arts. Whether they become artists or go into other fields of study, I hope they understand the significance the visual arts has on their lives. Researchers have shown that integrating the core curricula with the visual arts encourages multiple perspectives and avenues of access, supported engagement, and understanding. The visual arts deepen and personalize the learning experience. Youth Art Month helps to direct attention to the value of art education and its ability to promote divergent and critical thinking, multicultural awareness, technical proficiency, and expressive skills. The arts and art education provide the connections to essential human experiences. Our students need both the skill and creativity to successfully navigate the complex and ever-changing modern world. These displays show Henrico County School Board and Dr. Cashwell's commitment and understanding of the value of the visual arts education in educating the total student. The framed pieces you see here today at Newbridge and in the near future at Central Office will be on display until next year at this time. This is a tremendous honor. All teachers were asked to pick just one piece to represent their students for the year. At this time, our school board, Dr. Hughes, and our chief learning officer would like to recognize all students who have joined us here today to accept their awards. I'd like to invite our elementary student artists to line up to my right. Please have your certificate in hand, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. With a name like Calathis, I completely understand. So if my elementary winners could just come up here and line right up here and give your very best lines. So what I'm going to do is, you can come up, and you're going to show me your certificate. I'm going to read your name off the certificate. Shake the hands of our school board. Congratulations. Fists bumps.
Fists bumps.
Fists bumps. I love it. Come on up. Ria Krishnama. Reminded me of my own name. Avery Johnston. Astrid Pablo Organiz. Are there any elementary students I did not call? And we'll... yeah, we'll come back at the end. Sounds good. I'd like to invite our middle school student artists to line up to my right. Please have your certificate in hand. I knew your father. I played tennis with him. I'd like to invite our high school student artists to line up to my right. Please have your certificate in hand. Looks like we might still have a few more people coming in, so maybe we could just give it a second. Is there anybody else I did not call? If I did not call your name, please come up. Well, if anybody else comes in, we'll be up here for another couple of minutes. I'd also like to recognize three pieces that were selected to go beyond our school board display. The Virginia School Board Association has a regional contest each year in March to select the work that will hang in the state superintendent's office. This year, the pieces that were chosen to recognize Henrico at the regional contest were, and if these students could stand up, Will Jones from Knuckles Farm Elementary, teacher Nancy Denice. I know Will's here. Teresa Lu from Moody Middle School, teacher Tracy Thesson. And I don't believe she is here, but Rajana Green from Verina High School, art teacher Dawn Vass. And at this time, I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Title I room here at Newbridge for a light reception. I know, per our annual tradition, we usually take a group photo, so I would like to invite all student artists to please come forward. Elementary, middle, and high school, please come forward, and we're going to take a group picture with the school board. And we ask that once you take your photo, if you don't mind stepping back and let some others take a couple more photos. Thank you so much. And just in case you were wondering, the images behind me that are up on the screen, those are the works... most of those works are going to be hanging at Central Office. those are the works, most of those works are going to be hanging at Central Office. A lot of the works that are in here in this room right now are not in the presentation above, but we wanted to make sure that you were able to see your child's piece. Thank you so much. No, thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll come down to you in a few minutes, but thank you.
I appreciate you stepping in and talking.
Once again, we would like to thank everyone for coming out this afternoon. Please don't forget about the reception down this hallway in our Title I room for all of our students and families and guardians and art teachers to celebrate. And then I'd just like to adjourn this meeting for the afternoon. Thank you.